And how's your vacation?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to reconvene the school committee meeting. And we will reconvene with public participation. Is there anybody who would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Dr. Robinevich.
Yes, I have just heard today, and let me read. This is to Mrs. Joan Siemens. Congratulations. Your program has achieved accreditation by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, known as NIAC. The administration, teaching staff, and families of East Wareham Elementary School are to be congratulated for earning the mark of quality represented by the NIAC accreditation system. On behalf of NIAC, and specifically the NIAC Academy for Early Childhood Program Accreditation, I commend your program's outstanding efforts in pursuing NIAC accreditation. Please note that this accreditation decision report is specific to the data collected during the NIAC site visit only. If you have submitted a critical incident to NIAC via the 72-hour notification form, the outcome of the scope and severity screen will be forthcoming under separate cover. So congratulations to East Wareham, you're receiving the NIAC accreditation.
Excellent. Anything else?
That's all.
Jessica, do you like to go first with your good news?
I guess.
Since we missed you last week?
Yes.
Or a few weeks ago. Happy New Year, Jessica.
Happy New Year to you too. I just got a couple of things. This Thursday, January 12th, is the financial aid night for seniors, and that will be held in the auditorium from 6:30 to 8:30, and that will help parents and students fill out the FASsAs form and walk through that form to help them along with college. And then I also wanted to remind the seniors to stop in at Guidance to check the scholarship rack, because they are available for a wide scope of students. And also, the dreaded midterms are approaching.
In some cases, finals, right?
Yeah, for some classes, for some after classes, yeah. So midterms, finals, and that is January 24th through the 27th.
Dreaded midterms.
Yes. But with that comes February vacation.
Which you promised not to be sick for this time.
I won't. I'll try not to.
Okay.
I'll make sure.
Ken, any good news?
No more, sir.
Cliff?
Yeah, I do. It was my pleasure to attend the awards ceremony for District 1 DECA up in Hyannis. And I can't even begin to say how proud I was of the kids representing Wareham High School. They did an amazing job. They were certainly at the lead of the pack, as usual. And the way they looked, the way they acted, the dignity in which they performed their events, and the grace in which they conducted themselves at the award ceremony, you have to go there to see it to believe it. And this gentleman sitting next to me was the trailblazer with DECA, because he was in the very first DECA class ever, Wareham High School. And it was really kind of neat to see his daughter sitting at the award ceremony and receiving finalist status in her event, which was a team event. And so it was kind of nice to see two generations going through a program that's pretty important to me for a variety of reasons. But the program has grown from 16 students back in 1974 to over 100 students in our high school, which is not a really big high school. But to have 100 students involved in that marketing and management program and do so well, I think is a tribute, not only to the administration and teachers, but also to the families of Wareham, to encourage their kids to reach for the stars. And they certainly did at the award ceremony Friday. So congratulations to the DECA kids.
Absolutely. Rhonda?
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the minutes of December 21st. I will take a motion unless anybody has any edits, changes, comments.
Motion to approve, as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Dr. Robinevich.
Are we going to superintendents or school committee reports?
Oh, I'm sorry, school committee reports. Does any member of the school committee have a report on their committee? Yes?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
No.
No. Last night, the policy review committee did meet. We're going to have three policies for the school committee to review. We did update and expand on the fundraising policy that hopefully will be accepted by this committee. It just gave much more information around the types of organizations or the type of fundraising activities, and really what we expect as a district when it comes to fundraising. So that'll be coming to the committee on the 25th. We also approved the new internet safety policy that is required out of -- Dr. Robinevich, do you remember what was it, Child Protection Act?
It was the bullying legislation.
Okay. So we have a new internet safety. We do have an acceptable usage policy already, but this is on top of that, so there's going to be an internet safety policy that will come before you. And also, we did approve the budget. We weren't able to get to the energy conservation, but we'll get to that next time we ran out of time, so.
Okay. I have three things I'd like to talk about, actually four things I'd like to talk about. I will keep them brief, and I will hold one until after the budget presentation. The first is I just came from a meeting of the Cape Cod Collaborative. The collaborative is undergoing, not this specific collaborative, but collaboratives in general, are undergoing a great deal of scrutiny as a result of some unacceptable behavior by a small, I think, one or two collaboratives around the Commonwealth. There is legislation that would significantly revise the current laws relating to collaboratives. It has been passed by the Senate. The House has not yet acted on it. It would do a number of things, including doubling the size of the board members, and it would do certain things with regard to the personnel. I think our own collaborative, based on my multiple years of experience with it, is actually doing a very nice job. It is, unlike many collaboratives, represented by school committee members, and as compared to superintendents. That seems to be the direction the legislature wants to go. It is also financially quite sound, and there's a lot of scrutiny of its finances by the respective board members. So I am not particularly concerned about the Cape Cod Collaborative, although I am concerned about unintended consequences associated with the revision to the regulations associated with collaboratives. Among them is the fact that we have a very unusual situation, that because of regionalization and very small school districts on the Cape, we have, as I said to my colleague before the meeting started, we have essentially the classic founding-of-this-country Rhode Island, New York problem. And that is, we have very small school districts having the same amount of voting authority as very large school districts. And since the legislation would literally double the size, the number of representatives for each school district, it would double the problem of uneven voting authority and power within the collaborative. That has not been addressed. In addition, we have had our first charter school apply for membership in the collaborative, which of course would be another very tiny student body compared to an entire school district, which, under the current legislation, would give them the same voting rights. And on top of that, the legislation would make it, in order to revise the agreement, it would have to be unanimous. So to say we've got some work ahead of us if this legislation goes forward is an understatement, but we will plow forward. The other thing I wanted to mention was, there was essentially the beginning of the implementation of the teacher administrator evaluation process with a webinar this week. For those of you who haven't kept up with this major change, the regulations involving how we evaluate teachers and administrators has been radically overhauled, and it will be implemented over the next couple of years. Wareham is an early adopter of these regulations. So are RTTT schools. They will be starting this coming fall, and after that, all schools will be expected to either adapt, adopt, or take their existing regulations and make sure they're consistent with -- excuse me, existing policies, and make sure they're consistent with the regulations that have been promulgated. It is going to be a major effort. Wareham is ahead of the pack in our efforts to comply, thanks to the management and union committee that has been working for over two years to do this. And then finally, as a small footnote to a presentation on the concussion policy, I just wanted people to know that I tested the girls' tennis team, and a number of the team members, and future team members and their parents have already gone through the policy, did it online, and emailed me their certificate. So it is quite possible for this concussion policy to be successfully implemented, which I know our athletic director will be very happy to hear. With that, I will move on to the superintendent's report, but I will have some comments about the budget when we get to that presentation.
Thank you. Actually, the first two things I forgot to mention during good news, the NIAC took my attention. And the first item had to do with congratulations to the Minnet Forest School and the John W. Deacon School, as winners in the Some Dogs, and maybe one of the principals can tell me what that really is, Massachusetts statewide contest, and to students Jared A. of Minnet and Ethan O. of Deacon for being in the top 10 students that answered the most questions correctly in the contest. The students each received a certificate of merit, and the schools received a Yenka 3D shape site license worth $330. Some Dog is a free math games, and Yenka lets students create 3D mathematical models, virtual science labs, and 3D layouts and characters in technology and ICT and computing. So congratulations to both schools for participating and coming in with some top students. Also, my second good news has to do with a recent event we had with the Foundation for Wareham Education that awarded grants to the following teachers worth $2,438. The teachers that received those grants, Jen Strasdas, Wendy Brugoli, Kathleen Lyons, Peter Zwellen, Barney LaSosa, Pamela Schluter, Amy Dion, and Marie Kavicki, all won awards that evening. So that finishes the good news part. The interesting news under the superintendent's report has to do with our review. We are having a district review by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education during the first week in February. In fact, between Tuesday, February 7th, and Friday, February 10th, we will have five members of a review team here in town to interview various administration, teachers, parents, and school board to see how the district does. And the review's considered carefully the effectiveness, efficiency, and integration of system-wide functions using ESE's six district standards: leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support, and financial and asset management. In your package, I believe you received an invitation to two separate interviews. So you will be interviewed by two separate groups, and not to have a break of open meeting law, they will separate. So if the four of you or five of you come, they'll do two of you with one interview, two of you with another interview, and the last person by themselves. So at no time will there be three school committee members, so the meeting does not have to be posted.
But the times are consecutive hours, if I noticed correctly?
We had one as a later time, so that if somebody could not make the time, they could come to the later time.
Okay.
So we try to take that into consideration. If some people can't make the times in there, if they let me know, we will try to reschedule. We do have a schedule that I can provide you with the next meeting, if you'd like, of all of the interviews that are happening.
Okay.
We will be -- Mr. Gilmore has graciously given us space. They needed three interview spaces, as well as a secure room for records to check and internet access and so forth. So they move in and expect our cooperation for those five days. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you. Wareham High School Art Department. Where would you -- is that table available, Anna?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
There's a microphone up there, so that's probably a good place to be.
We have Amy Dion, and we have Mr. Tricker.
Bless you. Excuse me.
I think most people know Mr. Tom Tricker, who's the department head. Maybe you could introduce your colleague.
This is Ms. Amy Dion. She's been a teacher in Wareham for 12 years.
12, yes.
Oh, then we should know you better.
And she was hired to teach at the middle school.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Ah. Go ahead, Tom.
All right, well.
Or Amy.
We're proposing a New York City field trip for a group of about 35 students for the date of April 13th. We leave about 5:00 a.m. in the morning, arrive there around 10:00 to go to either the American Museum of Natural History or Madame Tussaud's Wax Museum. From there, we'll have lunch, continue on to the Metropolitan Museum of Art, continuing on to Times Square for supper, and then hopefully with enough fundraising, we can do a Broadway show before leaving by 10:00 to head home to be here for 2:00 a.m.
Yeah.
We did this trip last year. We didn't do the Broadway show. We were home by midnight.
We were home by midnight last year because we didn't have enough funds to run the Broadway aspect of it. But we had supper in Times Square and then returned home. So the kids are, you know, excited to try and raise enough funds to get to the show. And I did it as a high school student, coming home at that time, and it's a one-time thing, you know, once a year. I'm not expecting.
It is a Friday evening.
It is a Friday evening before vacation, so they can rest up.
Right, even though it is Friday the 13th.
I did notice that, yes.
Going to New York.
Not superstitious.
And we've been doing fundraising. We had a fundraiser at Barnes &amp; Noble. We did the butter braids. And there was some other.
There's going to be a bake sale, some other fundraiser where they'll be selling something the students also want to try, and have an event where they make something or use the old company store as a venue, because they have offered to help us out in the past as well. So the students are brainstorming at this time for further fundraising between now and April. Some of it might be, you know, involving community restaurants where we, you know, might have a night where people can go and eat, and we get a percentage of that, so.
And last year, we were able to raise enough funds where the ticket price was $30 for kids?
$30. It covered the cost of their meal for dinner and the two museum tickets. The bus was covered, which is about $2,200 for a coach bus.
Questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before questions are asked, I just want to say that I cannot speak more highly of this trip. I was privileged enough to be allowed to go last year with the kids, and the biggest thing that I got out of it was, as we were first pulling into the city, almost every student had their phones out filming going into the city many, many times. This is the first time the students have been in New York City. And that experience alone is an amazing opportunity for the students of Wareham. And then you're able to put them in such cultural beauty of the museums, but I would say that you could say the same thing about Times Square, that again, it opens up a whole new world. And so I would -- I don't have any questions, because I was able to be in it, and I read through it, and it seems like a lot of the suggestions from last year are put into this one, but I would encourage the committee to approve this field trip.
Ken?
Is there the possibility that there could be more than 30 students? I'll tell you why. That would be my concern, is I'm not comfortable with this, you know, 30 seats, and it's based on seniors, then juniors, and you take into account fundraising, so there's a possibility that some of the kids could do fundraising and not be able to go. Am I correct?
The students, early on, even now, they know of the trip, they know of the possibility of it. If there is interest, they come see me, and they participate in some aspect of fundraising. And they're, you know, the list has been made, is beginning to be made, of students who want to go, who are interested in going. I mean, there is still a small, you know, there's still a fee for some of those students to go. So as of now, I mean, if 35 kids wanted to go, if I had enough chaperones to cover, you know, I would be willing to take 35. I mean, it's just making sure we have enough people to accompany us, adults to accompany us, and.
But I think if it came to that, where if a student did fundraising and couldn't make it, then we could, I'm sure we could refund their money, or they could put it towards next year if they're not a senior. If they're a sophomore and they raised $100 in fundraising and we couldn't let them allow them to go on the trip, we could either somehow refund their money or put them on, you know, the list for next year. But I don't think we've had that as a problem.
No, I mean, being the first year doing it last year, there was nobody turned away. Nobody was sent away having done fundraising and then didn't get to go. Everybody that was interested, participated in fundraising, they did go.
So I'm just assuming then if it was a coach bus, there's more than the availability for 30 seats.
50-some seats, yeah.
Maybe a transportation director knows that, but that would be my concern, is I hate to see kids do all the fundraising and then they don't have the opportunity to go, whether it's one, two, three, or four.
Right, right. And I think that we would know, or we're gathering the list, we know enough ahead of time, too, where we're not going to be, you know, a week before the trip or whatever, and be like, no, you can't go because we don't have the space. But I would prefer to keep it at one bus, that we have, just that we're all together, and we're not two buses in New York, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Cliff?
Just as long as they've got adequate supervision, have a great time. It's a great experience.
So the fundraising covers the $2,200 for the bus?
Yes.
Okay. And last year was the first year.
Yes.
And what did you learn from your trip last year?
Um.
I don't mean academically, I mean logistically. What do you think you've learned so that it'll be even smoother? How will you do it differently this year than last year?
Well, I think we had it pretty well -- we've taken some of these kids on field trips before to other things, so we know, maybe dividing us up, well, Amy counts like 15 times for all the kids that are on the bus to make sure you don't leave anybody. But in the past, we've kind of, okay, you're going to be responsible when we get to the places for these 15 kids or these 12 kids. And we've kind of divided the supervision up, so that's made it a little bit more manageable.
Yeah, I mean, for all intents and purposes, it went off without a hitch, so it was pretty well orchestrated. And like I said, I had more chaperones, you know, the museums asked for one for every 10. I had one for every six, you know. So there really was enough people to, you know, keep a good eye on the group of kids, so.
And the bus went, I thought, pretty smoothly. We've had some field trips before where we've had maybe trouble getting ahold of the driver, but he was very responsible, or we were able to get ahold of him. We had enough cell phones, and it helped that you had your iPad with us so that we could see what the wait time was when we were looking at the Ferris wheel for the kids and things like that.
Yeah.
And he'd been to New York before, so he was very helpful.
But I encourage that you're counting to 30 about 15 million times on this trip. There is, all the supervision that was on there, we're very aware where we were, what needed to happen, and I have to agree, there weren't any issues.
Mr. Palladino, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd just like to add that the one condition is on that could come back and go on the field trip again.
Well, Cliff is the one worried about, you know, whether all the students are going to go, so I think he should go this year. I'd be happy to, though. I mean, sorry, Kenny.
I didn't say anything about being worried about any of it.
No, it was Kenny. I apologize. I apologize.
No, I'm glad. These folks do several field trips a year, and they're well-run, well-supervised, very punctual with the time they leave and the time they come back, and I have no concerns.
Okay. Are we ready to consider a motion? Yes? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for approval for the art trip to New York on April 13th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Have a safe and wonderful time.
Great, thank you very much. While we're here, if we're going to put a plug in, we're having our art fair at the high school on March 30th. So if you can come to that, or the community is welcome to come to that.
Make sure Jessica plugs it during our February meeting, and March meetings, I should say. March 30th, you said, right?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Anna? You have a heating oil bid for us to consider?
I think people, that lady with the green, the pink, and the yellow at the end, we have two, we can ask them to share. So there's a three-page, and a one-page.
Heating oil bid?
Oh, I thought Anna was going to do it.
All right. Finally.
Okay. Heads are to. I have it. Attached, you have in your package to me from Anna, attached is the acceptance letter for the annual Plymouth County Heating Oil Bill bid. The West Academy is our only building now using heating oil. We had at one point, two buildings that used heating oil. Last year, we were able to convert a cooperative from oil to gas, so that now only West uses oil. And on the last page, you can see the bids that we received, and for Wareham, there were only two bids that we received. And so I recommend the acceptance of Peterson Oil, percentage of price adjustment and operating expense and profit bid. The bid result will fluctuate depending upon the wholesale posting in the Journal of Commerce on Monday of the week of delivery. And that's the way the bid is done by Plymouth County. And those were the various vendors that came to the bid opening run by Plymouth County.
Any questions? I'll take a motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Thank you. And we have a gift.
We do? I'm sorry, I'm concentrating on the budget. Gift, where is my? Okay.
Thank you, Jessica.
Maurice and Anne Makepeace Family Foundation. This is an annual gift that we have received, at least for the four years that I've been in the superintendent's office and before that. The trust. Please send a letter confirming your receipt of this gift to the Maurice and Ann Makepeace Foundation, care of American Research and Management Company, and a copy of that letter to each of the trustees at their respective addresses. And so this is an annual gift and it helps underwrite a portion of a salary of a teacher at the cooperative school.
And greatly appreciated. Any questions? I'll take a motion.
No move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Four zero zero. Thank you very much. We are now going to move into Dr. Robinevich's first public presentation of the FY13 budget.
To follow along, you have the updated budget presentation, a one-page budget, a three-page budget, and then the budget detail. That was given to you this evening.
I would like to remind everybody while Dr. Robinevich is setting up that this week is the first time the full school committee has been presented, has been presented the FY13 budget. We will not be voting on the budget tonight. A week from tonight will be a public hearing on the budget. That will include not only the school committee, but it will also include the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator. That public hearing is significant, not only because it will be a full presentation of the budget, but questions and answers will be appropriate at that time from, from any person who is in attendance. And then finally, a week after that, the school committee will vote on the budget for the fiscal year 2013, which begins, of course, this coming fall. I would also remind everybody that we are doing this in the context of an unknown amount of state aid, both general state aid to the town of Wareham, but also Chapter Seventy School Aid, which is ten times larger approximately than general aid to the town. So that always makes this a very difficult process. Dr. Robinevich?
Yes, thank you. I know this is going to make some of my administrators uncomfortable, but would you please come down so if I want to call on you, you're right here as the hall. And so that the school committee can see that you were here this evening to help answer any questions that they may have. So I'm asking all of our directors and principals, please come on down, as they say in the game show business. And Bob, do you want to maybe, I don't know if there's one more chair? And Christian, do you want me to pick this up and speak into it?
Well, good evening and for the viewing public, I want to thank you and I'm sorry if I turn my back on occasion to speak to the committee, but I will try to talk to the public as well as the committee. Our chairman has already reminded you that we are having a public hearing next Wednesday evening, held right here in the middle school auditorium, and we hope that many of you will be here. I've already been to two school council meetings and PTAs requesting for parents to be here. I think it's important for people to see where the money that we are asking for is going. If after this evening you have any questions, feel free to email me suggestions of how to make this better or questions that you have about where money is going. I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Dr. Robinevich, just as a protocol, as you go past each slide, would you just pause and give the committee the opportunity to ask questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The budget, as everybody's aware, there's a process in place. This is the same process that we have used for a number of years. We start off, here is a timeline. In the beginning of December, we asked all of our principals and directors to come forward with a budget that is basically a needs-based budget, what they need to run their building, including additions that they feel are needed to increase student performance. Those are the only increases that we ask to see, except for where collector bargaining agreements have called for them or the actual prices. If we were underfunded in an account, we've increased those accounts as well. What am I trying to communicate this evening? The money we have requested is needed to close the achievement gap. That's the same line that I used last year, and I will say it again. Where our students are achieving next to where the average achievement is in Massachusetts, there is a gap and we must close it. There is an achievement gap, I believe, because there is a funding gap. I will also show the difference between the state average funding above minimum and what our voters give to the schools in Wareham. Before you is a chart, and the top purple line is English Language Arts for the state of Massachusetts. And the, I'll call it blue, it may be a different color, but that's where our students are. And as you can see, we approached the state in 2009, but the gap now seems to be widening. If we look at mathematics, both the state and Wareham started below where they should have been, but they have increased. The state has increased and Wareham has increased. However, the gap remains. Here is a chart showing Wareham versus the state average in spending. This is the percent above or below what is required as a minimum. As you can see near the beginning, we started below. We kind of came up in ninety-five, then we began falling down, and there is a consistent gap between that funding. In fact, this year in 2011, we were funded at one percent above minimum. The state was funded average at thirteen percent above minimum, a twelve percentage point difference. That twelve percentage points would have been over two million dollars of additional One year ago, when I, we had a public hearing, I said certain things were necessary to close the achievement gap. Full implementation of Wareham's response to intervention. We've talked about it in these meetings, it's called RTI. Implement enhanced supervision and instructional leadership. That Mr. Swett talked about, the progress we've made in our evaluation system and that we've had to put in some staff to help that happen, known as instructional leaders. And we had to because of the Common Core, the Mass Core, we had to implement the Mass Core curriculum at our high school and throughout the district. So those were three things that we needed to do. The progress that we have made and what still needs to be done. We were able to hire two half-time instructional leaders at both of our elementary schools last year. In this budget, I am asking to increase those half-time positions to full-time, which equals two FTEs, or two positions between the two elementary schools. By June thirtieth of this year, our K through six teachers will have had a thirty-six-hour course in RTI by Teachers Twenty-One. And grades two through four grade teachers will have had coaching by having a coach from that organization in their classrooms as they are implementing the RTI. What still needs to be done is implementing it in grades seven through eight. Those teachers are going to need training and we're going to have to continue the coaching and implementation, basically K through eight. As part of the new evaluation system, the Combined Labor Management Committee applied and were accepted as an early adopter of the new evaluation regulations for teachers, administrators, and the superintendent. The next step with that is that our joint committee needs to continue working to make sure that our system is compliant with all new state regulations. It's a work in progress. At the spring, actually the fall Massachusetts Association of School Committee meeting, that joint committee made a presentation and we had members of the school boards from across Massachusetts that listened and have called. In fact, we have a meeting next week with the superintendent from another community wanting to know how we've made the progress that we have made. And we need ongoing training for our ILs, department heads, by our consultant from Research for Better Teaching to make sure that we have consistency when people are being evaluated. We have next steps. We have to continue the changes that Desi may give us after they've looked at what we've given them. And we need training for all administrators to ensure consistency. We have a new block schedule at Wareham High School. A lot of negotiations and hard work went into getting that. We've now implemented it and I'm told by the high school principal, we need a new math teacher so that we can give the programs that our students need. Our math curriculum at the high school needs to be rewritten and we need to buy materials. We have bought new math materials two years ago for K through five. Grades six, seven, and eight got new materials this last year. Now it's the high school. What was Algebra I is now, almost three-quarters of that course is going to be taught in middle school and where high school students are going to pick it up. It's going to take it from the end of Algebra and move it into Algebra II. So everything is changing. We have to change materials. And we're also on the literacy materials. This is the first year of our new literacy K through eight curriculum and materials need to be bought for that program as well. Where is the money going? The net school budget is broken down into seven major categories. Those of you who have the one-page budget report, you can look at that and at the bottom, I've subtracted non-net, which is transportation, and that's the handwriting that you'll see at the bottom of that page. And on the next slide, you will see it. I'm sorry, these numbers are kind of small, but this shows the seven categories that I'm going to be talking about. District Leadership and Administration is known as the 1,000 Accounts. And if you go through the three pages, you will see that there are 1,000 accounts, a number of them. Then we have Instructional Services, which are our 2,000 accounts. Student Services, 3,000 accounts. Operations and Maintenance, the 4,000 accounts. Insurance, Retirement, I believe a 5,000. We go to Leases, and then, I don't know, I think Leases are about number seven on the list. And then number nine is Payments to Other Districts. But there are seven categories there that will be flushed out on the following slides. If we could, all right. The bottom line of this is this is, this is just net school spending. It is a 7.1% increase that we are looking for or $1,800,000. Most of that money is in two places. On the screen, and you probably can't read it because I use green for money and that not showing very well, so I'll change that at the next presentation. But it's $1,349,000 for Instructional Services and $311,000 for Payments Out of District. So those were where the big increases come. Why the increase to this year's budget request? Simply put, it's for classroom teachers, instructional leaders, additional interventionists, collector bargaining agreements, that's what CBA is, textbooks for new literacy curriculum, and high school math, instructional technology, and the loss of federal grant money that we needed to make up. Here is the chart that shows you where the majority of the money. The red is Instructional Services, and that one doesn't really show a percent, but that is where the bulk of the money comes. And then in the purple is, I believe, our Out of District. And if you put those together, that's the majority of the money. Is that correct or is that Operations and Maintenance? Can't really tell what to call it. I'll put percentages on for our next presentation, so it'll be a little bit clearer. Thank you. Okay, the 1,000 accounts. This is where, and if you look at the three-page document, you will see we have 1,110 function. And this is because the Department of Education requests the budget to be broken down into these four-digit numbers. So we have the 1,010 through 1,450, and it shows you that the increases and subtractions, the bottom line of all the 1,000 accounts, District Leadership and Administration, was a 3.1% increase or $21,832. Now, I am going to break this down into other slides, but just Instructional Leadership, the 2,000, it shows you all of the four-digit numbers. And it's Student Services, Curriculum Office, Department Heads, Principal's Office, Principals and AP salaries, Curriculum and Other Leaders, Building Technology, Home Instruction, Special Ed, Summer Program, Teachers in the Classroom, Teacher Specialists, Instructional Leaders, Facilitators. And it continues to the next slide, Therapists, Substitutes, Professional, Paraprofessionals, Library, Professional Development Courses, Staff Development, and Textbooks, Meteor, Instructional, and Other. And then it keeps going. Bottom line, before you move, Bob, on that one, is that this, all of these added together, all of these additions and subtractions add up to $1,349,338, or a 6.9% increase. The next series of slides will actually show you where the increases are.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Question?
Please.
Sorry for not, oh, I was on a roll.
Oh, yeah, you're just rolling along, yeah. It would help to me on the, like, the Instructional Leadership slide, if we can put numbers there to, to show how many teachers, how many are Building Technology, all of that. I think it puts it in perspective as to what those numbers come out to.
Okay. Would you, would you write a number down for me in that note? Thank you. Thank you very much, and I'll add that.
Thank you. 2,210, principals and/assistant, it's a 64,681 increase, or 5.7%. If you look at it, you'll see that the bulk of that money is the second line where it says new ECS coordinator. That is the East Wareham coordinator that we talked about at another meeting where she was being paid out of the teacher line, and now it has been moved into this line. And the net difference, we felt, I think the number was about $12,000. And so the difference from the salary line is placed here. So that's the increase. And that, so it's not an increase in the budget, but it's an increase to that line item. And that's why it's gone up by that amount of money. And the anticipated negotiations and step ratio for assistant principals, that has to do, if somebody is getting a second masters, a CAGS, or another degree, you have to put in a certain amount of money for the collective bargaining agreement. Plus, we are negotiating with our assistant principals coming up this spring, so...
Any questions on that last one before I keep rolling?
Okay. And here we have, this is where the additional people come. The job coach for West Wareham and Cooperative, it's a halftime position in each place. That would be $40,000. We've budgeted for it. A special ed teacher for Wareham High School, $45,000. A new math teacher for Wareham High School, $45,000. In last year's budget, we had two years of gifts for Makepeace. I didn't use it the year before. Last year, in trying to cut my budget, I used two years of the gift. So that's why it says, "Loss of gift, $20,000." Loss of Title II funds, it has been reduced, $47,613. Loss of kindergarten tuition, money that is received from people who pay tuition, and it's a sliding scale. And as the economy has worsened, more people have gone into paying very little rather than paying the maximum. And so that cost us $100,000 for our full-day kindergarten programs. Tutoring after school, at this, these meetings, we have talked before about when we offer tutoring, certain people could not participate because they didn't make the income level or their test scores weren't low enough. We've included money here, so anyone that wants to get tutored after school would be able to. MCAS remediation at the middle school, Mr. Gilmore asked for $16,396. Additional funds for summer school, $10,000. And negotiated raise for the Teachers Association, it's, that's a one-and-a-half percent raise This year's middle school account was overbudgeted by $50,000. That's been cut because of the eight teachers that were cut last year, and after the dust settled, the amount of money we thought we needed and the money that we needed was $50,000 less. This adds two interventionists, one at each of our elementary schools, $83,720. And, I don't know, we have, oh, all right, one from, we've got two at each of the buildings, is what it is. So there's $83,720 at each of the buildings. Grand total of all of those, additional personnel plus the collective bargaining agreement, $704,518.
Mr. Chair, any questions on that slide? Not that I'm aware of, thank you.
2325, instructional leaders. The halftime positions made to full would add one FTE at each of the elementary schools. You see, one, we actually took the salaries of the people that are in the jobs. So at one building, it was $67,769. At the other building, $58,820. And there's actually a negative of $1,129 that we were overbudgeted for the IL position at the middle school. The total was $127,718.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, you have a question.
Very, I'd like to hear from the elementary principals around the instructional leaders. And I know that we're only halfway through the year, but I want to hear, since we implemented that program last year and that we have gone through almost a half a year of using them, of the changes that they've seen, or the improvements, or just how that program is working in your schools.
Are you looking for that answer this evening?
I'd like, sure. I'd like a little bit, for a preview.
Do you have anything to say, like a short answer?
I would very much like a short answer.
A short answer is permissible this evening.
Thank you.
Because one of our members was afraid we were going to be here until midnight, so...
Time out. Asserting my prerogatives as chair, I would like the answer to be as long as they feel it's necessary to accurately answer it. Thank you. I want you to look at the school committee, not the superintendent.
I have been very happy with the two instructional leaders that we have at Minnet Forest. They are really going above and beyond the, what they have for hours in the day right now, because they're trying to do two different jobs. One is they are interventionists in the classrooms. So they're going in, they're working with students. They're part of our assessment team. We call them the SWAT team, the school-wide assessment team. So they help to go in, they do, they dibble the kids. They're collecting all the data, so now they're the data keepers of everything. They're sharing the data with teachers. These extra 45 minutes that we have once a week, they're able to use some of that time to share the data with teachers, and the data is now driving our groupings. So for the grade levels that have been trained in RTI, and we now have our flexible tiered groups, they're sitting down with teachers, they're discussing students, and they're placing these students in various groups. I'm so excited that all this conversation has been taking place this year. I think it's the best year we've ever had, because we have the personnel that's facilitating it, we have the time to do it. And I feel it's really making impact on the students and placing them in the groups and getting them the support that they need. The other part of their job is doing the walkthroughs in the classroom. They're doing observations, which I know is helping with the administrators. We've split up the caseload of evaluations we have to do. Because we're early adopters with the new teacher evaluation system, every teacher's being evaluated this year, so it really would not have been manageable without these extra people to help with that as well. So there really isn't a definitive fine line that says, okay, 50% of your job is here and 50% is there, and you only do this in the morning, or you only do this part of your job in the afternoon. They're doing it all day long. And as I said, it's going beyond the school hours right now because they're trying to get it all in. So this is why we had the need for those positions to become full-time. Just the amount of work that they're doing, it's really been amazing. And I know the teachers appreciate having the results quickly. They gave an assessment for dibbles right away. They have the information that they need to inform instruction.
And so you are receiving a positive response from the teachers also? I mean, I hear how it's for the school, the interactions with the teachers, and the teachers are seeing the instructional leaders as also a benefit?
Absolutely.
Could you pass the mic to Chris, please?
I'm going to just second everything that Ms. Seaman said, but one of the things that I will touch base on is the collaboration among the teachers and the instructional leaders. It is remarkable. The trust that is there, and if the teachers have an issue and they have a problem, they feel quite comfortable with disclosure as far as, okay, this is the situation in my classroom, this is what's happening, how do I fix it? And so in that respect, where we went in thinking that perhaps the coaching area might not be able to be manageable because they are now looking at a more of a supervisory, supervisory and evaluative position, that didn't seem to skip a beat at my school. There's a great trust there and a great confidence in the ILs. And so in that respect, they're really building that community learning. And it's really, it's a great base.
Thank you.
They're very, very, very welcomed at our school.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Can we ask Howard also, since he also has an instructional leader?
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I didn't mean to split you.
The difference at the middle school is that Tracy Kotay is the instructional leader, and she's a full-time instructional leader. So she has the responsibilities of, this is a little, kind of a little different for us this year because we have a number of teachers who are new or have been...
Howard, could you do me a favor and speak up as much as you can?
Sorry.
Because the microphone works for the TV, but it doesn't work for the people in the room.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're in a little bit different position, so Tracy's responsibility has been to help coordinate the critical thinking worldview as far as the teachers teaching that, because every teacher is teaching that, 26 of them. And then also, excuse me, 36 of them. And then on top of that, her responsibilities are for those new staff and the staff who have been displaced, gone into an area that they were not present before teaching. So she has a responsibility with them. And I think the major benefit is that the curriculum is being implemented across the board in every classroom in the same manner. So I think you realize that with the new math that we're doing at grade six, the everyday math, and at grade seven, transitions math, and at grade eight, algebra, it requires making sure that all of the eighth-grade teachers are on the same page at the same time, doing the same common assessments. And Tracy works very collaboratively with Debbie Maxim, who's the curriculum leader for the mathematics and the math teachers. So she's been able to work with them so that they have time to have the conversation about the implementation of the math program and its effect upon the students, and to make sure that there are common assessments and that we are at the same point with all of the students as we implement grades six, seven, and eight. And the same with the literacy curriculum that we have at six, seven, and eight. That's new as well this year, the Common Core, far more rigorous, more informational text, more background knowledge that students need to have. And we make sure that, again, that same conversation is happening amongst all of the English Language Arts teachers, as well as those teaching reading and literacy, 21st Century Skills, or Reading Writing Workshop. So I think it's been a real, a real help in implementing a rigorous curriculum for all students at grades six, seven, and eight.
And I thank you for that, because you touched on a point that I definitely wanted to hear across the board, which is that that assessment is going on, you know, and because of the instructional leaders, that more assessment is going on all throughout the school year. And so we're not all of a sudden going into a test and then getting that shocking, you know, moment that, you know, our students weren't where they needed to be. And so having those additional instructional leaders are helping you do that assessment along the way. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I think we're good for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 2330, paraprofessionals, there's a $40,000 increase. We have a part-time CNA that we hired with the use of Edge Your Job money. That money is gone. And negotiated increase in steps and lanes for the paraprofessionals as CBA. And 2410, textbooks, instructional supplies, it is a large 8.71%, $117,000. That's because this has been underfunded for many years. We need materials for the literacy curriculum at both Deccus and Minnet. We need high school math texts. And I will tell you that that $4,000 mark is nowhere near the money that is needed for those books. That was what was included, and we will look at the needs of the district with this textbook funds and make sure that we move it around where we need it the most. We've had a reduction in the middle school textbook account because we purchased those new math books this year. And we need additional funding because both at West and the Cooperative, there were no funds or not enough funds for textbooks for the students there.
One second. Barry, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification for our audience. The textbook media you said was 8.71, it's 87.1?
Oh, is it 87.1?
No, 8.71.
That's what I have on this slide. So I want to make sure that I'm saying this isn't correct.
No, it's 8.71.
It should be 8.71.
Okay.
Thank you.
Instructional...
One second.
So sorry, just a quick question. The literacy curriculum has already been chosen?
We have a group of teachers working on it with the curriculum, and they are choosing the materials. Do they need?
So the number that you're...
It's an estimate of what we think is required.
Okay.
That's a good guess.
Yeah, just 62,813, to me seemed very specific. That's the only reason why I asked, because it looked like...
Both principals turned in a certain number. One of them had a specific materials in mind. There was conversation between the two principals to come up with a number similar. However, it needs to go through the curriculum department before the materials are bought, and we have to factor in the needs of the high school. So I'm looking at the textbook account as, no matter what building it's in, the district will have to make the decision where the materials are needed the most.
And there's coordination going on similar to the math program that we're looking at, you know, that it's the elementary middle that there's...
It's a K through eight literacy program.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Instructional technology, again, I'll just say, Mr. Gilmore has put in the last two years for these additional smart boards. This year, we also have the replacement of mobile carts. There is a lifespan when we buy mobile labs. You buy laptop computers, they travel in a cart, and after, class after class uses them, they stop working as well as they did. And we finished construction, actually, we started, the end of the construction was 2002, between 2002 and 2005. So the last ones bought were 2005. It's 2012, they're seven years old. So they do need to be replaced. And then there were additional supplies necessary in the department for fixing things. So questions about instructional technology?
It's a statement that I'll make. When you take a look at the four-page document, the percentage increase, you're going to see 114.2% increase, and you're also going, in textbooks and related soft materials, you're going to see an 87% increase. Overall, in the budget, these are the two largest percentage increases, not dollar amount, percentage increases. And the only thing that I would say about that is that this is where we have been, these are critical items that our students need to be in the, where, in the world that we are today, having the most current materials to be able to learn from, as well as having the technology that they need that most schools, that many, many schools have. So again, some folks might see this as nice to have. I see them as critical to getting our students where they need to be. But this seems to be where we continue to say, well, that's a, we can cut that because it's not needed. I would just say that it is needed for us to get our schools where many others are today.
Thank you.
I'll get off my soapbox.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
To Rhonda.
No, 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 we don't allow intracommunication. Go ahead, Ken.
No, I think she was looking at the same slide as I was that said 87.1, and... No, I think she was looking at the same slide as I was, that said 87.1, and Dr. Robinevich corrected that, so I think you've mentioned that.
Oh, 8.71.
Right, so.
Okay.
It makes it seem.
It, it could be because all of those are crunched together in that four-digit number. So the four-digit number breaks down into these various other numbers sometimes. So I will have to look at that to make sure that the, because these are just the ones that went up that I needed to explain, that we added. So the number you see here may not equal that number.
Thank you. My guess is that both numbers are correct, but on this three-page document, it is clearly not 8% up, it's clearly 87% up.
Student services, and this breaks it down into some of the items that are contained within student services. Attendance and medical, small increase. Nurses actually went down. Athletic services, $4,000, only a 1.4% increase. And other student services, up 1,600. It is a large increase because it was cut the year before. So instead of having a progression of going up a little bit each year, we cut it one year, we found that we needed the money there, and so it was increased again, and that's why. But the total, as you can see, for these four functions, is a minus 2.3% increase. Maintenance of building, I have an explanatory slide coming after this one. But this is where heat, electricity, all of our utilities, maintenance of grounds, the plowing, sand, salt, the equipment necessary, telecommunications, phones and so forth, and technology maintenance, they're all here. And it's a 4.9% increase. On the next slide, I will explain custodial services, why it went up so much, and telecommunications. All right, custodial.
One second, Barry.
Barry, we're going, and I told you I'd volunteer to help you on this, are we going to try to get on the Springtown meeting, Viking Drive, accept it as a, are we going to write an article for that?
That's an excellent idea, and if Michelle will write me a note on that, that we, I will ask someone to write it.
It has direct bearing on this account.
On this particular one, the 54,595 that went up under custodial services, we didn't hire an extra custodian, we're not paying our custodians large raises. What happened is, we had EDU Jobs money, and if we used it to pay for a teacher, then we have to give 11, or is it nine? 9% of that money goes right to the retirement board. So instead of using a teacher, we paid for custodian salaries out of EDU Jobs so that we could use all $47,000 directly, and it helped reduce the budget last year. Unfortunately, that money is gone, and we had to add it back in. So 47 out of 54 is simply because of the loss of EDU Jobs. The other 7,000 is because we found we needed some more money in substitute and overtime for some of our custodians. When it snows, we have to call people in to shovel, it could be overnight, it could be on the weekend, all of that is overtime. We had a para who worked in a building, in fact, we had two tech paras in one of our buildings. We determined that the particular individual had a lot of self-initiative and would be great working throughout the system as one of our information specialists. And so she was moved up, and all of her salary moved into this line. So about 20,000 of that was already in the budget, but it was under a para line. Now it's here. So that's the difference in that line item. Contractual, underfunded 2,000. Network contract, 6,369. Increase for equipment maintenance contracts. And Wareham High School to updated, outdated technology, 8,815. And then we reduced some money from East Wareham under contractual services.
One question. Do you think it would be appropriate, this is the second time that you said that, you know, it's been moved from one line to the other, and that the net is smaller than, than what is here, the increase, to, to put a note to that fact here, and then also in the East Wareham Elementary School also, just because, I'm hoping that this presentation is going to be public and in the papers and online and people to download, and I think that it would be important to add that piece of detail, so then they understand that it is not a new position. Because when you're looking at this, it, it might seem that way and just basically say that.
I can put a note at the bottom of the slide, so when people look at that slide, if they go online, they, they will see it.
That'd be great.
It can't, it won't be on the three-page or the one-page because those come out of Vadar, but I can do it on this presentation.
Thank you.
You've also, you've also mentioned EDU Jobs multiple times. Could you total the impact of EDU Jobs on this budget?
$54,000.
So we're making up for the loss of $54,000 in total for the entire budget?
For, in EDU Jobs.
Yes, thank you.
Retirement and student insurance, small increase of 5,689 or 3.5%, and that is because of copy releases. Tuition, and I want to spend a little bit of time on this. If we, Program Systems Mass, 9,100, that's down a little bit, but that $140,000 is for students that, when they leave the eighth grade, do not go to Wareham High School, but they go to Bristol Agricultural School. Now, where Upper Cape is paid for directly out of town budget and does not come out of the school department budget, students to go to the agricultural school, since we do not belong to that group, comes right out of our net school spending. And in fact, we get bills, it's in our budget, and we have to send a check for $140,550 for approximately 10 to 12 students at this particular time. It's, tuition is 17,580, something along those lines. 9,300, programs, schools, other. What I want to say here is, both this 9,300 and 9,400 are the money that is necessary that we need in the budget. It is not the bills. The bills for this are above these numbers. In fact, the two lines together, where it says, and I'm going to just add, so if 2013, it says, if you, $1,773,785. The real bill is over $2 million. And the reason you don't see that other $300,000 there is because we get a grant backed from the state called Circuit Breaker. And Circuit Breaker works as a reimbursement. We have to spend the money this year, we then make a claim, they then audit it, and then they determine what they will send us back. It was, by law, 72%. Two years ago, when the economy went south, they brought it down to 45%, 40%. It is now up to 65%. But depending how the state goes, that's what will happen to the reimbursement. So we use the funds that come in for the following year because we're then sure how many dollars actually go into the account. So we're not calculating money that will be coming in, we're talking about money that has already come in or that they owe us to make that balance. So I just wanted that known, that we've already applied the savings from that grant to these accounts. And that's why you see fluctuations, because it all depends on how much grant money is available to us to offset these numbers.
So you're saying that they, it came back up to 65% in this path, this, so the year that we're in right now?
Right.
Okay, when will we find out whether it's cut or increases for this upcoming budget season? Is it around the same time? Next spring?
Late spring.
Late spring. So is that around the, no, we'll, okay.
And the, the funds come in three payments. So to be honest, we really never know exactly how much we're going to get, even when they tell us we're going to get 65% until we get that last payment in, because it, they will adjust it if necessary.
Right, that's the reason why we have to keep applying to the following year to make sure that we all of a sudden don't, at the last minute, have to take additional funds out of the L E A to pay for this, because most of these service, we, we have to pay for these services.
So in this year, where we had one case that was very expensive that came in, we got no help in paying that this year, fiscal '12. But the reimbursement will help us pay for some of that the following year, because we'll have larger claims because of that placement.
Just to be clear, even this reimbursement, you're not even eligible for reimbursement until you have spent four times the average cost to educate a regular student. And then after that four times, call that over $30,000, then they decide what percentage. Am I correct, Bob?
$38,000.
This year, it's $38,000. So we have to spend $38,000, and then they decide what percentage to reimburse us. And of course, as Dr. Robinevich has said, it's fluctuated from 40 to 70 some percent, and it's trending lower.
Non-net school spending. This is the money that we are requesting for our transportation. And it's, we're asking for $223,625 more than we got last year. Why? Because over the last six years, the account has not grown. As salaries have gone up, as gasoline has gone up, as the cost of repairing our older vehicles have gone up, all we've done is cut this number. And last year, at the end of the year, we had a deficit of $180,000 that we funded ourselves from money earned in the revolving account. If we plan on using that revolving account to purchase vehicles, we need to appropriately fund this account. That's the money that is needed.
Mr. Chair, any questions on that one?
No, I just think it's, you need to emphasize the fact that the fiscal year '12 budget of $1,361,000 was not what we requested for fiscal year '12. We requested about $100,000 more than that. So the comparison from FY '12 to FY '13 of $223,000 more is essentially a meaningless comparison, because the budget for this year has nothing to do with the reality of what it costs to operate the Transportation Department.
Thank you. And this shows what was received of non-net school spending over the last six years. The average increase for six years, negative 0.58%. Total budget for 2013, we are asking for non-net school spending of $1,585,277. Net school spending, we are asking for $27,195,370 for a grand total of $28,780.647. That adds up to a 7.58% increase. Interesting, when you looked at the budget that was in the newspaper from the town, you will see that what was provided to the school department as a starting number was about $2 million less. In fact, it was a million and a half less than we received last year. However, another educational institution that this town pays was given a 6% increase at their first cut, at the town budget.
Dr. Robinevich, I have to correct you. It was a $2.9 million difference between our request and what was in the draft preliminary budget. So it was actually much closer to three than two, 2.9 million.
Questions?
Ken.
Any questions for any of our listeners?
I'm all set at this.
Rhonda?
Dr. Robinevich, can you talk a little bit about, you, you did mention EDU Jobs as a grant that we lost this year. I know that there were several issues that the school system faced last year because of many of the grants that we lost, or funding, the additional funding that we received from the federal government and also the state. Are, besides EDU Jobs, are there any other grants that, or are there any other increases that are due to grants that we lost? Or, and/or, are there, have we applied and brought in new grants to help supplement or basically put more money into the budget? But the first one I care more about.
The previous years, as you said, we had money called HARA. And we had maybe a million and $300,000 worth of extra funds that we split over two years, not spending it all at once, because we really believed that the economy would come back in year three. The economy did not come back, that's where EDU Jobs came. We then, if you recall, that was allegedly worth $800,000 to the school system, 870,000. But at town meeting, we lost 400,000 of those dollars. Therefore, we were left with 400,000, and we needed to spread that over two years to get us through this year. And now all of that external, extra funding is gone. At the same time, federal grants like Title I and I T E A, each year have gone down a little bit.
Under 10%?
Kindergarten and Title II, they go down about 10%.
About 10%.
If you're going to make a comment, it would be very helpful if you'd speak into the mic.
The, the net loss is more than 10% because of the increases in salaries and benefits, step and lane increases for the many people who have paid for those grants. So the, the actual dollars are down approximately 10% for I T E A and Title I, but the, the impact of that is greater than 10%.
Yosa?
Yes.
Cliff?
I've just got a couple of questions and maybe a couple of comments. I want to prolong the meeting. I was one of the few people last year that was seriously considering voting against the budget. And I got to be honest, I'll be seriously considering voting against this budget again. Not because I think it's too, it's too high, it's because I think it's not high enough. But that being said. But that being said, I would like to know if there's been any computation or calculation on the impact that choice has had on our district. Because I know that we were on the plus side of choice, whether it be special ed or special programs. But now there are several schools in the area that are offering choice. And I'd like to know from a net perspective, has anyone determined what the effect has been on choice? Whether we're still on the positive or are we approaching the negative?
This is the first year that we've approached negative.
So in other words, we are, we are going to see negative effects on choice based, which definitely reflected in Chapter 74, is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, Chapter 70, I should say. That bothers me. As I walk through Wareham and go into the supermarket, go into the banks, I hear more and more talk about not sending their children to our schools and sending them down the And it's unfortunate that we can't compete with down the road on a per people basis. And I think the reality has got to sink in. And it bothers me that we used to be on the plus side of choice, but now we're probably going to be on the negative side of choice, which is going to be reflected in Chapter 70. I've also been concerned and been very vocal, and I thought that all things being fair and equal, that we should certainly be reflecting a percent of increase to our collaborative vocational school. And we haven't done that for the last 20 years. So I think that that is also a yardstick that has not been applied to Wareham Public Schools. And I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned with the, with several line items. As you said and pointed out, some of, some of the line items have gone up drastically, but in my opinion, some have not gone up drastically enough. The first and most important as far as I'm concerned is instruction. Since I've been on the school committee and even before I got on the school committee, we've seen programs cut, not restored. We see libraries and facilities not utilized. We see not enough electives at the high school. We see elementary classrooms that are bigger than they should be because we've had to make do with what we had. So I, I don't think that the instruction line item is adequate. I really don't. I, I just think, I think it went up what, 6 or 7 percent? And from where we've been in the past and looking at it in terms of comparison to where we've been in the past, I don't think it's accurate, adequate. I do however believe that the money that's being spent on the instructional leaders is a good investment. Because for the first time, there is going to open up a vehicle in which we can look at instruct, teaching and learning, instruction and assessment, also student work from a collaborative perspective. And I think that that's certainly a positive thing. So even though that is a huge increase relative comparison to the budget, I think it, it will show gains particularly in student achievement. So I have some concerns with the budget. And I want to, I want to credit everyone that's worked on it. I want to credit the subcommittee that's worked on it. I want to credit you and your administrators that have worked on it. But I, I guess what I'm saying publicly now is in my professional opinion, this budget is inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the first thing that people should understand is that comparison to last year, for that matter, comparison to quite a number of years now, is extremely misleading to the public and to those people who have not followed this budget process for a number of years. The good people that are in front of me now, your management team, have been asked for, seems like many years now, but certainly several years, to put forth a needs-based budget. And what happens is, they do it in good faith and then it gets cut. For some reason, they keep doing it. It's like putting your head against a brick wall. So each time they do it in good faith, their needs, their deficiencies haven't disappeared. But the gap between what they need and, and what gets funded continues to grow. So when you see percentage increases like 7 percent as a total, that doesn't mean 7 percent on top of a base that was good enough. It means 7 percent on a base that wasn't good enough. So to suggest that 7 percent is too high, as Dr. Sylvia was suggesting, is ludicrous. On its face, it just means we haven't met their needs for now several years, if not The state has failed the town of Wareham. I have said it before and I am going to say it again now. It has failed the town of Wareham. The truth is that they are scared to death that some parent with a child is going to say, wait a minute, I thought the Supreme Court said it didn't matter where you lived, that you were entitled to an acceptable level of education. The truth is, that's what the Supreme Court said way back in the early 1990s. And now, almost two decades later, we are now failing students again. In fact, in about 80 percent of the cities and towns in this state are being failed. Guess which ones aren't being failed? The top wealthiest, 20 percent. Because they keep adding money to their school budgets and they don't care about Chapter 70. But if some parent had the courage and the means to sue the state, it is my opinion, after a lot of years looking at these numbers and talking to a lot of people at the state level, they would lose and they are scared to death of losing. Because then they'd have to figure out how to actually honor the agreement that they entered into with the Supreme Court of the state of Massachusetts that said that the formula would be honored. They are not honoring it. So the question before this town, perhaps more than ever before, is are we going to make up for the failure of the state? That's a, that's a really awful question to ask people who are just trying to put food on their table and shelter over their heads. And yet that is the question that is going to be facing this town come April Town meeting. I feel like apologizing for the fact that that question is, is going to be asked. But there it is. We are $2.9 million away from just a needs-based budget based on the draft that the town administrator prepared. Now, the town, you could say, well, where was the town administrator? Well, the town administrator was also looking at the rest of the town. The rest of the town departments went up about 4 percent. We went down about 3 percent. You could say, well, that's not fair. Well, yeah, it's not fair. But the rest of the town also needed that 4 percent too, to meet its needs. Even if Chapter 70 goes up, let's say 5 percent, and that's not considered to be a given. But let's assume that we get 5 percent increase on the approximately 12.2 million that we got for this fiscal year. Easy math, call that $600,000 increase. And even assuming that we got all that $600,000 given to the school budget, then the difference between our needs-based budget is still $2.3 billion. Ladies and gentlemen, that's a lot of teachers. And don't kid yourself, that's where the money is. Remember that's, that graph where all the, that more than three quarters of the money represented instruction, which of course is where it should be? Nobody has to be told anymore that the most important person involved in the education of our children is the teacher. So we're at $2.3 million. Will it get a little better? Do I have some quibbles with this budget? Yes, I've been involved, as Dr. Vinnovich knows, every step of the way in this process. And the numbers are, you know, all over the place. Could I quibble with some five digits here and five digits there? Sure. It all adds up to, not even, not even, it's almost a rounding error on the $2.3 million problem, assuming we could get an extra 600,000 from the state. So I'm not going to sit here and, and ask micromanaging questions about a variety of things that, that occurs to me as I, as I hear this presentation. I'm just going to go to my usual place of 50,000 feet, which my committee and Dr. Vinnovich knows I like to be, and say, we have a million dollar, multimillion dollar problem that the town is going to have to decide what kind of school system it wants to operate. I don't envy that decision-making process. But I do know that it is not a platitude to say that we deserve what we get. And if we, if we take our school system and continue to allow it to deteriorate for lack of proper funding, then we are doing a major disservice to our children. If they don't graduate from high school, prepare to either go on to college or get great training at some other institution and have been well-prepared for that training, they will not be successful independent adults. And we will not be able to be proud of where they end up as a career and as an individual and as a citizen. It's that simple. But that takes long-term thinking. And I guess I've used up my prerogative as, as chairman with my long speech and I will, as my colleague says, get off the soapbox. But I do want to tell the committee that we have been invited to have a pre-meeting with the Board of Selectmen at 6 o'clock a week from tonight. The meeting that we talked about a few weeks ago did not, is not going to occur because it was felt by the finance committees and the capital planning committee that we should resolve whatever differences we might have with the Board of Selectmen before they become a part of the process. And I can respect that. The agenda for this committee is not, this meeting is not clear. When I spoke to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, he indicated that it was primarily a meeting to form a committee, which sounds a little silly on, on the surface, but I, I am treating it with all the seriousness that I think it deserves, given the seriousness of the situation we are having with this budget. I am sure that one of the first things on the agenda will be transportation services. But I hope they are open to a committee that also looks at other things because I think there are other serious issues to consider. So I'm asking for the committee to approve meeting at 6 o'clock a week from tonight with the Board of Selectmen to discuss mutual, issues of mutual interest. And that will require a vote of the, of the school committee so that Michelle can post it. It will not be a long meeting because the meeting is requested for 6 o'clock and then the public hearing will start at 7:00. But I ask your support and I support it and I would like you to, like you to be there. So for, at least for discussion, I would like a motion for us to meet at 6 o'clock a week from tonight with the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, yeah, Cliff, please.
Out of respect to you, I will go to that meeting. But you know my feelings on it.
I am greatly.
I just think, I just think that you reach, you reach a point in time where you meet just to meet and nothing really gets accomplished and then it ends up being counterproductive. And that's been my experience since I've been on the board. And I'm not saying anything against any other board. But a meeting just for the sake of meeting doesn't really have, and, and it's very hard for me to get behind a meeting that I don't even know what to focus off.
I, I think when two elected bodies sit down in front of each other with the public and the press present, hopefully something productive can come out of it.
Well, I certainly hope so.
And I am not going to go into the meeting with the preconceived notion that nothing will come out of it. I certainly hope it does.
Out of respect for you, I'll support the motion.
And I appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. First of all, to the administration and teachers who are here tonight, thank you very much. Your attendance is greatly appreciated. I know you have worked very hard to, to, to make this budget. I hope we can honor it by giving you as much of it as we possibly can. We will work very hard to do exactly that. And to Dr. Vinnovich, thank you again for a presentation which I know was well thought out. And we will, we will do this again in a week for a public hearing. Dr. Sylvia?
I just, I forgot one very, very short point. Could I make it now?
Please.
I just happened to be going through some old notes because I was cleaning out my basement. This I found very interesting and they might find it interesting down in the audience. I left Wareham in 1997. When I left, I was a director or department head, 6212. And I had responsibility 6212. And I remember going through the budget and I remember, I, I don't have the exact number, but my memory serves me that back in 1997, our textbook budget was, was higher than we're recommending right now, in 1997.
Thank you for that historical footnote.
Rhonda?
Dr. Vinnich, what sort of PR is being done in local papers to promote the public hearing to get folks here? Are we doing need-based stories, the importance of being here? And if we haven't yet, can we please try to do that over the next weeks or, week or so to get into our newspapers on Public Access Television that this is available? And also, I don't know if it was done last year, but if we can do a global connect. The public hearing is just an important way people need to know about it and come and ask their questions.
Michelle has sent a news release out about the dates that this budget was being presented, including the 18th public hearing. I and Mr. Swett have been to a few of the school council meetings, asking parents to be there. And we will make a global connect. And I know we have at least one member of the press here this evening. And we have our public service cable television show that will also have it on.
So I, it's just a request, but take it for, if you can, is that some of the things that were said tonight, I think were important, are important to have a story about them in the, in the paper around some of the things that are in your presentation, some of the things that were said here tonight about the needs of the schools, about the funding over the last several years. I think that that is very important information to get into the public. And I know that we, we provide a lot of information. We have the, the information and the eight-hour presentation that was shown at least three times on Public Access Television. But I think that having a story about this budget process and the needs-based budget that we're putting forward is an important story to tell. And it would be great if we had a story like that in the paper.
Absolutely. And I think we need to remember, this is the beginning of a long journey, which, and I could say April Town meeting, but last year, if you recall, the vote on the budget got postponed until May. So I'm asking parents to be here on the 18th, but also to be prepared for Town Meeting in April and as long as it takes to pass the budget that is needed.
Is there any other business that committee members would like to bring before us? Cliff?
Other business?
Yes.
Anna? B M O K, we usually use the, limitation to that, but we didn't get anything in the mail. Is that happening on Monday?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Anna, do you want to say what time and Anna's been attending?
I have, I purchased a ticket.
Okay.
Anna seems to be coordinating it. She was the one who reminded me.
The annual will be out fourth year honoring Wareham students. Anna, can you check the microphone?
Bring it closer.
It will be our fourth year honoring Wareham students. It's a wonderful program. Saturday, doors open at 8:30. We expect the program.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Monday. Monday, doors open at 8:30. We expect the program to begin at 9:00 and it'll run till about 11:30, 12 o'clock. It's, it's a wonderful opportunity to, to recognize our kids and also to build that sense of community and support around the kids. community and support around the kids. Tickets if, can be reserved by contacting Barbara Sullivan at the Boys and Girls Club. I believe tickets were just now in hand. And so, you could just call. And you can actually log on to the Boys and Girls Club website and also get information and able to reserve tickets through that venue as well.
And the guest speaker this year is?
Our guest speaker is Dr. Donald Montero, who is a native of Wareham, graduate from Wareham High School. I don't want to tell you too much about him because we want you to come and find out and meet him.
And he's being introduced by Claire Smith and.
And.
By Mr. Robert Russo.
Russo.
Oh, Father Time.
I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Cliff, for reminding us all about this important breakfast.
I'm looking forward to that introduction. We've also added an additional piece to this event this year in that we will now, on an annual basis, recognize an individual in the community that has done, you know, really strong advocacy and work for Wareham youth.
Any other business before the committee?
Yes. If I can ask, and I'll try to make this quick. I have a pin that I would like to present to each one of our administrators today. And just to let members of the finance board know, it's not purchased with school department We are pleased to honor you as a part of our team, the administrative team, Wareham Public Schools, and it has a picture of four children of multinationalities holding up a star. And it says, "Together, we make a difference." And I believe each one of you do every day. So, if you could come up, please, starting with Kathy, and just, I will give you your pin without tripping over myself over here. So, yes, you have to come up in front of the camera. One more, Scott.
Kevin's going to get it.
Jeff, you can talk to it. If you're part of the team. If you don't pick the kids up, they don't come to school. I need, I've got one more.
There's two more.
Janie? Go ahead. Because Anna already gave one.
Right, got one.
The budget didn't come together by itself. Every one of the people here tonight has put in countless hours, and they will be here on the 18th to answer questions as well.
A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Almost two and a half hours earlier than you thought.